Welcome to tonight's July 1st, first day of July, city council meeting for the city of Casa Grande. And welcome everyone. Our agenda tonight, I'll call, first of all, I'll call the meeting in order. And our first item on our agenda is our invocation and our pledge. So I believe that tonight we have Pastor Paul Elgin from the First Presbyterian Church here for our invocation. And then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. Those attending the meeting tonight, all of us are God's children, so let's pray. Great heavenly Father and Father of us all, we ask your blessing on our meeting tonight. Guide our actions and our hearts. Keep us united in the purpose and love of God as we seek your will for our many duties that bless our city and its people, its employees, officials, and especially the first responders, and all of those in service to others. In a quickly polarizing society, draw us together through the family you give us, the family of God, which is the whole world.
Help us to work together despite our differences and perhaps even because of them come to a greater understanding of each other. Bless our work tonight with wisdom and confidence and with your grace and peace. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll give us just a second. Try to get Mr. Lavender back on the line.
Give me a second.
Thank you Pastor Elgin. Thank you Anthony.
He said he's on.
Oh he is?
Jeff, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right. Let the roll call show that all are present except Mr. Lavender, but he is on the phone tonight.
So noted.
Next item is item C, our minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we ask to approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of June 17, 2024, as well as approve the council special meeting of June 17, 2024.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved as presented. Next is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated June 12, 2024 through June 25, 2024 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Does anyone has any changes to the agenda as presented?
Is that your knee?
That's not my knee. Not me.
All right.
I can do that. That's it.
Meeting agenda approval. Anybody have any changes? Staff?
Have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, hearing that, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Next is our consent agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be new separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to remove? Anybody from the public?
Yes ma'am.
G, which one?
G8.
So note, we'll pull G8 off and consider it in its normal sequence of the agenda.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of G8.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Can I please get a roll call vote? Evan?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. If I'd have read my speaker card, then Nancy, I would have noticed that you wanted to pull it. All right, so this is where we will consider that item on the agenda, because this is where it falls. So G8, you would like to make a comment? Please state your name and your address for our records.
Hi, it's Nancy Wood. Thank you again today. Nancy Wood, 513 Speckle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And I came up to speak about G8 because it was involving road construction, which we desperately, everybody wants and a lot of needed things to do. And I totally support the item. This is not to do with that. So, but it has to do with the burrowing owls. Because with the construction of all these things that we need in the city, the owls we're finding are getting pretty impacted by the road construction and land development and things like that. I know we're a growing city and it's a good thing that we have new things coming in. But just to prepare, when there's going to be any kind of groundwork, even if it's just roads, the owls oftentimes live not very far off the roads in the areas that are open and sometimes even close to other trees, other things that are close to the side of the road. So it's really important for any of the work crews that are going to be hired in to do work in the city that they're made aware of the owls. And that the city, you know, check in these locations where they're going to do any, because I, you know, there's a lot of projects all over town, and the owls some places and not others, but it really is very, very important to check before any kind of work is done because the heavy equipment and piling up dirt for the construction or equipment and things like that, it tends to get placed off to the side and in these open fields and then it impacts possibly the owls that are in the area. Because we have areas that, especially right now with all the construction, are on Quartzon Road because of all the sewer work that's being done and all the intersection work. We're having a lot of new places put in, things like that. Arizona Game and Fish does have guidelines for anybody, any landowner, any company, the cities, anything, if they want to know what kind of parameters to do for, you know, their groundwork before they start. Because the main thing is to do this before the work starts. Because, you know, as a conservationist with this, we don't want to impede the work. You know, we want them to get their stuff done, you know, get to work on time, get the projects, it costs money if it gets delayed. And if all this is done before, then there isn't any delays. And yet the owls are protected and the things are done. And, you know, we've gotten a number of calls from concerned citizens, and it's the reason that we know that they're being impacted is because, you know, they ride their bike or they walk their dog and they see them every morning and all of a sudden there's a truck over the top of them. Or, you know, something's happening or whatever, and they call. So it's not me necessarily going out, it's concerned citizens that we have here in Casa Grande. So just involved in, you know, the roadwork and things and stuff like that. It's just a comment that I wanted to make. I totally support all the work that we need to do. And it's great, thank you. It's just, I'm here to help if there's any questions and things like that, so. Thank you.
I'm curious Nancy, because I know you kind of have single-handedly raised everyone's awareness on burrowing owls.
Yep.
Including our mine friends out to the west. And I think they're actually going to be building a burrowing owl sanctuary out there. So as they make changes in their landscape, they will move the owls into that sanctuary. And so, but I also know that our construction companies have been looking for the burrowing owls, especially Ellison Mills and the people who are doing the sewer work, because I know they've identified several of them out along around Hennessy area. And so they, I think, Kevin, you have some information on, is that why you're perched over there? Pardon my pun.
Good one.
So maybe he has some information that maybe you're not aware of. I was, I was thinking you might actually compliment the city for actually looking for burrowing owls, but that's, that's okay.
Well, they're hard to find, so I fault no one. Because, you know, I didn't know how to look for them when I first got here.
Sure.
And things like that. I, you know, I've learned over time from other people and things like that. And they're difficult to spot because they move into other ground squirrel holes and rabbit holes and things like that. And if you, it's looking for little details to find out. Because a lot of times you only see them in the morning and the evening. And so during the day when you're out walking a field, you won't see them around. Because they hide from the sun.
Sure.
So.
Kevin, did you have an update on that? Maybe Kevin can give you some update on this.
Thank you Mayor. Yeah, that's correct. She mentioned the Hennessy Sewer Project. Hunter Construction is out there right now. They're our contractor doing that project. And we're currently just waiting for our permit to relocate the owls that have been identified within our work zone. And that work zone is basically wherever we're working and 100 feet on either side is the zone of impact that has been identified by the state. I also want to let you know that we have amended all of our contract language to include this, so that our contractors are obligated. In this instance, the city's going to be paying a little additional for this work to get it taken care of. But we're also developing a program within Public Works and we'll probably roll that out to Parks and Rec as well, because they're out in the community impacting these or could potentially be impacting these areas. We're working on that. I'm actually halfway through my burrowing owl certification program so that I can go out and do the surveys to identify that. And then I'll be developing a program to get others certified as well.
All right.
But we are currently waiting for the permit to relocate the ones that we've identified. And I think there are six.
And you're working with Fish and Game too, right?
Pardon me?
You're working with Fish and Game?
Yes, that's, that's the program we're working through.
Okay, thank you.
But it is a work in progress, we're not done yet.
All right, thank you Nancy. All right, then I'll entertain an ordinance number for item G8, please, there's no further discussion. Okay.
Ordinance number 3429, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Ellison Mills Contracting LLC for job order construction services for various intersection improvements, authorizing the expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Ellison Mills Contracting LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 3429 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes.
And Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we'll move to our word of contracts. I1, this is to consider approval. Sorry, oh, public, public comments, so how did I miss that? All right, thank you. We'll move to item H, actually, which is our public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who had any comments that they would like to make?
I thank you again. Oh, I'm already over. Anyway, Nancy Wood, 513 Speckle Road, Casa Grande, Arizona. And this is just kind of a public general comment for everybody, because I just wanted to let people aware that, because they're landowners and homeowners and everything that we have in Casa Grande, and they're the ones that see the burrowing owls. So these kind of signs are available for people that we can help with if they have identified any place where they want to have them protected and know that they're there. And we can also paint like hand signs too, that are, if they're hand painted and things like that, that put them out, that help identify where they're seen at and things like that that can help everybody in the community. So I'm just doing a shout out for anybody in the community sees them and wants to see that they're looked after in a certain location, because I don't know where all of them are. They're all over the place. But, so it's just a public statement that the rescues are, if you contact Wild at Heart Rescue, they're the ones that can help get signs and things like that through, reaching through people that volunteer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Like to speak to council tonight? All right, seeing none, then I will close the public comments and then I will move to I1. This is considering the approval of resolution number 5662.
So staff recommends acceptance of grant funds for the local jurisdiction affordable housing plan. The mayor, council members, and staff have shown interest, an interest to further understand our community housing needs. In addition, recent state legislation was passed that requires municipalities to engage in two different levels of housing study. With the grant funds, we are able to hire a consultant to meet the state law requirements as well as provide, as well as provide an in-depth housing information. The affordable housing plan must include the following components. Conduct a housing needs assessment. Identify housing needs across all income levels and housing types, affordable housing, workforce, and market rate. Identify housing initiatives to reduce housing barriers and increase the production of housing. Create an action plan to implement the initiatives. And create an education plan to communicate the importance of the affordable housing. Once the assessment is complete, we are required to submit the plan to city council for adoption of the affordable housing plan. The assessment will also identify how the city is doing regarding affordable housing initiatives and must be submitted to the state. City staff will work with a consultant and provide appropriate data and assist with coordination of meetings. A request for statement of qualifications was posted on the city website as well as the American Planning Association website. So we're hoping that we get numerous people interested, consultants interested in providing this plan for us.
Questions?
Mayor, do you know what the timeline is?
I don't have it with me right this second, but, so we're hoping that the request for qualifications will be, they're due July 11th. Okay. By the time we get it back through council, that'll probably be like August, September. So we're hoping to start September, October. Okay. They'll have a notice to proceed.
I do have one question. I know the legislature passed some regulations this session, it may not have anything to do with this, where they are requiring cities to do a housing study. Does this help qualify us for some of that?
Yes, we've included that language in the request for statements, that they will provide that same information.
Okay, good. So we can kind of kill two birds with one stone there? Pardon the pun. Nancy, I didn't mean that. So, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, seeing no other questions, then I will call for resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5662, a resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, authorizing and ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Arizona Department of Housing. Authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds from the Arizona Department of Housing in the amount of $107,000 for the preparation of a five-year affordable housing action plan. Authorizing the city manager to execute grant and purchase agreements. Authorizing the city finance director to accept and disburse funds as necessary. And authorizing the transfer of budget authority.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve resolution number 5662 as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Yvonne, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yep.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, item J is our, considering the approval and reappointment of members to the IDA, which is the Industrial Development Authority that is authorized under the city. Those members for reappointment are David Benedict, Hayden Henderson, Kirk McCarville, Ollie Solberg, with their terms to extend through August 4th of 2030. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment, Mayor.
Yeah.
I just wanted to thank, I know Hayden Henderson, which I go, I call Mike, and David, I call Brett, I think.
Yeah Brett.
They're both here today. And, you know, of course, looking at your applications and everything that you guys have done for the city, just on behalf of all of us, we really appreciate it. Because you guys have been on so many different committees and commissions and are committed to this community, so thank you again for agreeing to participate in this.
And being on it till 2030, you guys should have been paid.
That's a long time.
Long time.
And thank you to the other two. Sorry Donna.
Mayor McFarland, because of the fact that it is through 2030, is there any kind of like two paragraphs or something that we can say about why this commission is different from our other commissions? Because that is a long time.
I'm gonna let Larry answer that question, because we had this discussion today.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember McBride and remaining members of the council. The fundamental difference between the IDA and the other boards and commissions is that the IDA is a nonprofit. They ultimately have established bylaws. The organizations with the city association ultimately work in concert to ensure that if there is a specific project that the Development Authority is interested in funding through bonding, that it can become tax exempt and the like. And so while, while the mayor and council oversee the codes that drive all of our other boards and commission and you drive their terms, the bylaws of the IDA as a nonprofit ultimately is what drives the terms of the, of the members of this particular board.
Yeah, it's kind of a quasi-relationship with the city for their bonding purposes primarily.
I just wanted to make sure the public understood that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, because it is different than our regular boards and commissions, yeah. To your point. All right, seeing no other comments, then I will entertain a proposal to approve, a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, congratulations to those individuals and thank you for your service. Okay, that's about it, other than reports. So this is going to be a short night and you all can get back the rest of your evening. We'll start over my left, Donna, or, actually, you know, let's start with Mr. Lavender since he's on the phone.
No report, just have a safe 4th of July.
All right. Donna?
Just wanted to thank the Pennell Partnership, reference was last week. The mayor did a great job representing the city. We also, some of us attended the Arizona Town Hall that was on elections. It was a small group, but there was some great discussion. And just wishing everybody a happy 4th.
Matt?
Thanks Mayor, just a couple of quick things. It's my wife's birthday, so I need to get out here pretty quick.
Happy birthday, Erica.
Good timing.
First of all, I want to recognize Chief Keenan, the fire department. I saw that they provided water for a local RV park that was out of water with fries, so good job, good neighborly there. So I'd just like to see that happening and taking care of each other. And then Chief McCory asked me to talk about some awards from the Casa Grande Police Department. Traffic enforcement officer Jason Estrada and patrol officer Jacob Martinez are recognized for their efforts to keep the road safe. They were nominated for MAD Arizona Phoenix Law Enforcement Recognition Banquet for their commitment. And so they recognize Officer Estrada for his pursuit of safety as a member of the traffic unit, which included numerous DUIs, serious injury fatal vehicle collisions, and Officer Martinez for his consistent work productivity regarding traffic enforcement and DUI. And also our own council member Donna McBride was nominated and recognized for her role in keeping our community safe. She's been with MAD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving since the mid 1980s with her husband Mike. They volunteered over a decade at DUI Task Force operations in Maricopa County and also Cassis, since they moved to Casa Grande in 2002. So they support Pennell County DUI Task Force preparing meals for New Year's Eve. So good work to both officers and our fellow council member Donna McBride. Congratulations, and that's a big one for MAD of Arizona Mothers Against Drunk Driving, so good work.
All right, thank you Matt. Anthony?
Yes sir. I just wanted to say, I had a wonderful time. Opportunity Tree, those that don't know Opportunity Tree works with our Special Olympics for our different individuals that have their own handicaps or disabilities. But they had a regional banquet, awards banquet, that was held in Cassidy Grand. So you had people from out of Phoenix, Avondale, that area coming in. Maricopa was here as well. And all the drive-through prayer workers cooked the food and served the food. Helped with the serving of that, and it was a wonderful event. And I'm just so thankful for the workers, the volunteers that work with Opportunity Tree. And we have a local group here that is so good, Fire Slammers, really enjoy being around them. And they're very encouraging as well as motivating, and so so thankful for that. Also wanted to make mention, I believe I mentioned this before, at the Seats of Hope Garden near the Presbyterian Church and right behind the Seats of Hope office, they're building a special memorial for Juan Hughes Pastor, Juan Hughes. We painted the pergola, there's a lot of work that we're doing. And we're just asking if you would like to donate, if you have any funds to help with the boot up of the memorial. You can work through Seats of Hope, you can give me a call as well too, or shoot me an email, as well as call Seats of Hope, contact them, and they'll let you know how you can give, and in the manner that you can give. And so we're looking forward to building that up. It's really, really looking good. I don't know if anyone, any of the council members got an opportunity to go look at that garden. It's come a long ways. They just did a couple drone aerial shots of it, and it really, really looks good. I painted the pergola. And it looks really, really good. And so if you have an opportunity, go by the Presbyterian Church right behind Seats of Hope office, and you'll be able to see the work that is going on there for the Juan Hughes Memorial Walkway.
Thank you. Lisa?
You forgot one other thing here. The Boys and Girls had their club, the Lankola, had their opening of their Innovation Lab, which is so nice, you know. It's in partnership with Cox Communication and the Cardinals. And so our own Cardinal alum here has his jersey displayed in the Innovation Lab, and so he was definitely a star over there on the east side.
Besides the Cardinal?
Besides the Cardinal, and the Cardinal cheerleaders.
The Cardinal cheerleaders. The Red was there, Cox was there.
No, but you know, Anthony, it's just so nice, you know, to come back into a neighborhood that you grew up in, and those kids just really look up to you. And it was just so cute watching them come up and talk about, you know, their parents knowing you and everything. So it was really neat, so. But thanks to Cox Communication and the Cardinals for their partnership with the Boys and Girls Club. It's a beautiful lab. I think, Mayor, wasn't there about 20 computers in there?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four computers in there, so yeah, beautiful. So good job, Anthony. And then the, I just wanted to also thank the PIO office and Richard Wilkie's group for the Small Business Workshop. It was their second one that they've had, and it was on marketing to small businesses. And it was just a really good workshop, and I know that's something that they're going to have ongoing, so I thought it was a pretty decent turnout that day, so good job there. Today, for those of you that aren't registered to vote, today is the last day to register to vote for the primary election on July 30th.
Midnight.
So please, yes, by midnight, go on to Pennell County Vote, I think it is, and you can register to vote. Please, 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 make sure you vote, register today. And then just a happy and safe 4th of July to everyone.
Bob?
Happy and safe 4th of July from me as well, and no other report.
All right. Well, I do want to remind everybody that on the 4th, we do have a major event happening out at our park. It's going to be at the Paul Mason Sports Complex. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. It's from 7:00 to 10:00. And, yeah, if you can make it out there, it should be a lot of fun. For those of us who are left in town, you know, please, please come out. And then I do have a comment on the, on the Boys and Girls Club at Lencola. I never have had so many kids ask me to sign their shirt. And so I apologize to their parents that they have pen, pen ink on their shirts, so I apologize. I just want, I just want to throw that out there, so don't be mad at me. I was just trying to do what the kids wanted me to do, so. I'm just, just throwing that out there. Anyway.
You were a player, too, I guess.
I guess, yeah. Well, I could need to hang out with Anthony more often. We did have the Pennell Partnership Breakfast, where we talked about, had a legislative update from our legislators, from Cook and from Keith Seaman. And so that, we had about a week ago, and then we've got, I had a meeting this last Friday, this on a, that was called by TJ up at the Capitol. It was on ag to urban conversion, which basically allows agriculture or owners of ag land to convert some of their water rights to municipal rights. So it gives them actually a better value or more land value for their property, so their water rights actually can be converted to municipal water use. So we could build houses on it if somebody wanted to sell their farmland, for example, where today that water right does not transfer. If you, if somebody buys it, that water right does not go with the land. And so in actuality, if it does convert to housing, it uses about probably 75 to 70, probably 70%, 65 to 70% less water when it converts to housing than it is when it's used for ag. So, so not all the water right transfers, but enough of it transfers that you can actually build homes on it. But the, but the governor vetoed the bill. So, anyway, there's a lot of not very happy people. And so we had a meeting last Friday to discuss what the next moves were, and you'll be seeing some more work come out of that. I did get appointed to the Governor's Municipal Tax Code Commission, so, or Committee, so I will actually be working on municipal tax code for, at least for the rest of this year. It's, it's a committee that convenes occasionally in terms of trying to take a look at tax code and see, you know, if there's changes that need to be made. Personally, I think there are a few that need to be made. I think that's probably enough for now. Got lots going on, the city's busy, and we'll be meeting and reconvening here back on the 15th of this month. I think we have a study session at 6:00, so look for that. Could be interesting. There's a couple of interesting subjects that we'll be discussing, and then probably a pretty short council meeting, again, as you all will be getting ready to vote on the 30th of July for our primary, which will have a big say in terms of our city council and our mayoral race. In fact, the mayoral race will probably be decided on the 30th of this month. So that, and just as a reminder, if you are a person running for office, your financial reports are due, they're due anytime between now and the 15th of July. So if you spent any money, you need to file. So that's all I have, just to, making sure everybody knows what they need to do. Thank you, everybody. We'll call the meeting adjourned.